In a person desiring to address the council must sign in indicating the resolution or ordinance appeal or public hearing agenda item before entering the meeting. When addressing the council, the speaker must state his or her name and address. Any person desired to speak to the council on a non-agenda item must sign into the city clerk office no later than two o'clock Thursday prior to the meeting. The such that he or she wishes to express to the council must be identified and pertaining to the city of Mobile business. Any person who has not given proper notice to the city clerk office and wish to address the council on a non-agenda item would not be allowed to address the council. These speakers allow three minutes to address the council. A bell will sound to indicate the end of two minutes. One minute remains for summarizing. The second bell means that your time has expired. When addressing the council, there will be no personal address to any individual council members. All statements ought to be made to the chair who will recognize any council member who wishes to respond. To maintain decorum, there will be no public outcry or applause, undue applause, outcry allowed. Mountain City Clerk.
Approval of minutes of May 2nd.
They're properly moving to second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Minutes approved.
Communications from Mayor Stimson.
Good morning. It's good to see everyone here this morning. Hope you've had a good day so far and hope the rest of it ends up being very good for you. I have a couple of announcements and then a proclamation that I'll read. First one has to do with Africatown Welcome Center, and we're continuing to do the design work with the firm of Mott McDonald. They continue to seek public input regarding the design of the building. So we'll actually be hosting the second public meeting Thursday, this Thursday, May 25th. It'll be at six o'clock PM at the Robert Hope Community Center in Africatown. We will show some of the early concepts that we have for the center and hope that we'll have good public participation so that we can take your ideas and incorporate them into the design of the building. The next item has to do with the countywide recycling study. The city of Mobile is working with Mobile County and other local municipalities to determine our recycling needs. So we will be holding some public meetings. In order to do that, we're trying to collect data so that as this decision is made, is to maybe an additional recycling center, where would it best be located? So the meetings that we have coming up in the community, there'll be one in Bala Batry. It's Tuesday, May 23rd at one o'clock PM. The next one's the County Hudson Center, Tuesday, May 23rd at six o'clock PM. And then there's one at Serraland Civic Center, May 24th at one o'clock PM. So anyone that's interested in giving their input regarding recycling, we hope that you'll show up at one of those meetings, or you can find an online survey through the city's social media pages. At this time, I would ask the Chief Prime, Public Safety Chaplain Ed Conick, and Mobile Law Enforcement Foundation Executive Director Gene Downing, please come to the podium if Gene is here. Yep, okay. Looking right, right at Gene, okay. Yep. Just the three of y'all right there, and I'm just gonna read it for y'all and present it to you. The proclamation reads, "Whereas established by a joint resolution with President John F. Kennedy and Congress in 1962, National Police Week gives special recognition to law enforcement officers who have lost their lives in the line of duty for the safety and protection of others. And whereas the city of Mobile Police Department and surrounding law enforcement agencies stand watch over citizens selflessly risking their lives to protect individuals, families, neighborhoods, and property against crimes. And whereas during National Police Week, officers who made the ultimate sacrifice in service to their community have become disabled in the performance of duty. And retired officers who died in 2023 will be remembered and honored at the 2023 Law Enforcement Memorial Service held on Thursday, May 18th, 2023. Whereas the city of Mobile publicly salutes the service of law enforcement officers who continue to serve, protect our communities, encourages all citizens to take time to express their appreciation. Now therefore, I, William S. Stimson, the 108th Mayor of the city of Mobile, do hereby proclaim May 14th through May 20th, 2023, as National Police Week." Congratulations, Chief.
I'll just simply say thank you to the mayor, the staff, and certainly the city council. You know, it's really a memorial week more than it is anything. And to all that being said, Godspeed to the families that's lost law enforcement officers in this nation.
I'd just like to thank all the Mobile Police Department officers for the service that they do. We are looking forward to Friday night celebrating our Mobile Police Department office. We're grateful to the city council and sponsoring with us for the banquet, where we recognize those officers that have gone above and beyond the call of duty in this past year. So we are just humbled and grateful to be in this role.
My last remarks have to do with words of encouragement to all citizens of the city of Mobile, and it has to do with really all of our first responders. And often you see them having breakfast, or maybe lunch or dinner. And I think frequently, frequently we're already doing this, but a way to express your appreciation for what they're doing is anonymously buying their meals. And so please just think about that as you see our policeman eating or fireman eating. Think about doing that because I know it would be greatly appreciated. Mr. President, that concludes my remarks.
Mr. Mayor, Madam Clerk.
Adoption of the agenda.
So moved.
They're properly moving to second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Agenda's adopted.
Appeals. We have requests for a wave of the noise ordinance, May 19th, on St. Stevens Road, June 25th, Sage Park, June 17th, Texas Street Park, June 18th, Cooper Riverside Park, May 28th, Arlington Park, May 20th, Medal of Honor Park, and May 27th at Langen Park.
So moved?
Second.
They're properly moving to second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Appeal passes.
Public hearing today is a public hearing to declare the structures at 2102 McGate Avenue, 556 Oak Drive Court, 2763 Gonzalez Road, 5800 Helen Street. Public notices and ordering them demolished.
This open up the public hearing for these particular said items. Is anyone present that would like to address the council? If so, you may come down to the podium by stating your name. Can anyone present? If not, this public hearings are closed.
Mr. Preston.
Mr. Dave.
There's some sidebar conversations going on in the audience. I'd just ask, as presiding officer, if you could direct those people to take those conversations outside.
Chief, you can count on that voice, please. Madam Clerk.
Public hearings today is a public hearing to consider approval of certificate of public convenience and necessity to Africatown Freedom Tours LLC to operate a bus service.
This open up the public hearing for this particular said item. Is anyone present that would like to address the council? If so, you may come down to the podium and state your name and your name, please. Is anyone present? If not, this particular public hearing is closed.
Presentation of petitions and other communications to the council. Carlos Finley.
Good morning.
My name is Carlos Finley, and I'm here this morning representing the Dora Franklin Finley African American Heritage Trail, 355 North Ann Street. In 2015, we requested funding from City of Mobile City Council as well as administration, and you graciously granted that request. Today, I am here to report on a return on that investment. We've unveiled six new historic markers since that time, and we have a seventh on the schedule for Spring Hill College. Today, we're standing here on the heels of the USA Today article which lists the trail as one of the reasons that Mobile has been chosen the second most favorite destination for summer vacation. And with many, many tours from the recent Explore Mobile event, we are super excited about where the trail stands today. This Friday, we will begin to celebrate our Heritage Weekend. Friday will be our annual Creole Award Gala, which will kick off here in the atrium at Government Plaza. We will honor the Excelsior Band for 140 years of service as our Creole Award recipient. Saturday will be the preview of Historic Franklin House Gallery, where we will be honoring historic and significant contributions made by African Americans to the city of Mobile and Dora, a beautiful sculpture created by Mr. Charles Smith and Mr. Frank Ledbetter. Those gentlemen also created the Three Sisters that are outside in front of Government Plaza, the Blue Marlins, which are down at Blue Marlins Circle at Warf, and the soon-to-be-open Heritage House's Memory Keeper. We are super excited about where the trail is. We're super excited about where the city of Mobile is relative to cultural heritage tourism. It is the fastest-growing leg of the tourism industry. On Sunday, we will celebrate the National Underground Railroad Bike Tour. That will start at Historic Heart of Mary School. It will proceed north to Africatown and back down into the city of Mobile, celebrating John Ragland, Slave Market, the Creole Fire Station, and Stone Street Baptist Church. We will end at Heart of Mary for a celebration that afternoon featuring a wonderful band by the name of Peaky Head Militia. Today, I want to give a huge thanks to Visit Mobile, Senator Vivian Figures, and Representatives Drummond, Clark, Bracy, and Jones. We owe an immense debt of gratitude to Commissioner Mercuria Ludgood and the Mobile County Commission. And we are greatly appreciative of our sponsors, Adventure Earth, Gwen's Printing, Heart of Mary School, Franklin Primary Health Centers, Bud Bush Brewery. And we want to let everyone know that tickets to the gala and registrations for the bike tour are available at DFFAAHT.org. And we want to ask everyone to join us and follow us on social media. Thank you very much.
Counsel.
Yeah, congratulations to you. I would like to ask you, of course, seeing why you're still up there. And again, this is great news, but could you just bring us to speed what's going on in Africatown? We know that you, one of the head men's out there now is the director. Could you just bring us up to speed for like 45 seconds?
Well, I'd be glad to, and thank you for asking. So Africatown, as the Africatown Redevelopment Corporation, is mission is to redevelop Africatown in its entirety. Of course, we're all super excited about the opening of Heritage House Museum, which is scheduled for July 8th. And we are currently working on developing properties in the city, increasing the housing stock in Africatown, and engaging the residents there. We have a food bank that we do in conjunction with the Africatown Community Development Corporation on every second and fourth Tuesday at the Hope Center. And then Reverend Chris Williams does another food bank on every second and fourth Saturday at Yorktown Missionary Baptist Church. We've actually been in talks recently with the city of Pritchard relative to their part of Africatown, because the beautiful thing about a historic district in Africatown is it is not only encompassed with the city of Mobile, but it also lies within the districts of the city of Pritchard as well. And so we're super excited about that. We've got some architectural drawings done. The city of Mobile continues to deed properties over to the redevelopment corporation so that we can develop those properties. We're super excited about the property at Newman Lane, which actually is one property that has five structures on it. And so we're gonna be able to be really creative with that property, and we're looking forward to seeing the fruits of these vibes.
Yeah, thank you so much.
You're very welcome.
Thank you for all working to join in the community.
Thank you. Have a great day.
I'm clerk.
Barbara Robinson.
Morning.
My name is Barbara Robinson. As I drive around Mobile, taking my daughter to her various meetings and events, I have found many obstacles. Ten percent of the population of Mobile has some sort of disability which equates to 18,000 people in our community. For instance, having to park in a traffic lane, which is against ADA law, to get a wheelchair next to the car to unload her as a passenger, going around the car in traffic to get her to the curb cuts. Sometimes I have to park way down the street to get to the curb cut, which is a block away. Signage is also a problem. People park in the blue striped wheelchair unloading zones as they are not specific enough for their purpose. The parking spaces are not sufficient to comply percentage of handicap parking spaces to total number of regular spaces. Those of us who deal with these issues should be the ones to help improve the situation. Make your council persons aware of these issues and make a plan to improve them. Retail businesses, office buildings, and restaurants will see an increase in business and therefore profits if disabled people can even get in the building. Business owners and landlords also need to know that complaint of complacency generates an inspection by the Department of Justice. For instance, an automatic door opener installation is under $3,000. The first fine for noncompliance is $75,000. These issues should be addressed via proactive planning and implementation. The ADA was written to address all these issues to make sure the people who are disabled in any way could lead a normal and independent productive life as much as they can without injury or exclusion. The Advisory Commission on the disabled needs to be involved in the development of the next budget planning for upcoming years to help ensure that matters accessibility and no longer dealt with in a reactive approach, but are worked towards being compliant with the safety of all our citizens.
Okay. Thank you so much, Ms. Robinson, for coming down. And you heard, you said the council person, but it's actually the administration, and the administration heard you loud and clear this morning. But thank you so much for coming down and bringing that to the attention.
Thank you very much.
John Kilpatrick.
We have one second, Madam Clerk. Sergeant at Arms, we had a request from District 5. We hear excessive talking on my right-hand side. We asking again, we can get that seized, please.
If you'll identify the individual that's talking, we will get them escorted out.
Good morning. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Good morning. John Kilpatrick, 1156 Spring Hill Avenue. Vet's Recover Resources is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization. Our mission is to remove barriers to care, to deliver integrated, high-quality health care, and to build a better community through recovery and connection. Our vision is to build a thriving community where veterans, first responders, and their families receive the care they need so that they can thrive in their overall well-being. We're committed to building relationships through our values of integrity, compassion, and respect, and we're also committed to radical transparency, especially when it comes to the spending of taxpayer funds. On October 1st, 2022, you guys awarded Vet's Recover a $200,000 performance contract, and I want to kind of report on what we've done with your money since that time. The stated purpose of the contract was to offset the cost of uncompensated care in our outpatient clinic. If you recall, we get paid back, or we get insurance payments or coverage for less than about 20% of the care that we provide. During the first six months of the contract, we saw 323 patients. We committed to seeing 500 in the first year, so we're about a 30% over what we committed to. During this time, we provided $415,310 worth of care, for which we were reimbursed just over $96,000, leaving a gap of about $319,000. And we used $80,000 of the $100,000 you've paid us so far to help offset that cost. During the same period, we took $20,000 of the $100,000 we received from you guys and put it into our community integration program, where we've served 3,133 citizens through outreach and education, especially through our mental health first aid training, which is gonna have a ripple effect, just very much like first aid CPR does in the mental health field. The other thing we did during the period is we were recognized by the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Care Administration for meeting the very stringent criteria to become a certified community behavioral health clinic. So I think we're one of the very few CCVAC expansion grant recipients who have met the standard within the two-year timeframe, and we did it in 18 months. So all the data's great, but really it's about the stories. Just this week, we had a client of ours, and we've established partnerships throughout the community with USA Trauma Center, with Ransom Ministries, with the Mobile County Health Department. And just this week, one of the veterans that we serve, who's also a client of Ransom Ministries, was involved in some gun violence. And through our relationships that we formed over the years with USA Trauma Center and Ransom Ministries, so we're ministering to these folks and caring for these folks at the trauma center and really providing some care that's just not available anywhere else. So we're supporting this person's family, providing social supports, and getting them connected with everything they need. So not part of the performance contract.
Yeah, we appreciate you so much for coming down on this morning. Is there any questions or comments from the council?
I'd like to extend an additional minute.
Okay, you have one more minute.
I sure appreciate that. I had this thing timed down to three minutes, and then this other paragraph jumped in here, and it's about 45 seconds. So I actually did tell you everything I wanted to tell you about the performance contract. So we've been very good stewards of your money. Not part of the performance contract, but we are on track with the historic renovation of the property at 1200 Spring Hill Avenue. So that's an $8.4 million economic development project right there in District 2. And Councilman Carroll will be there tomorrow. We're gonna have a media tour. If you're interested to come and see what we've done, we've got windows going in, and we are on track to get this thing open by the end of the year. So we're planning on a grand opening event. I don't know if we'll actually be open, but we're planning on a grand open event on the grounds for Veterans Day 2023. So I just wanted to let you guys know that we appreciate it. We're very honored to do the work that we do in this community. We are healing Mobile one person at a time, and we really can't do it without you guys and the county and the state, and even the federal funds that we've been able to bring in. So we're really, really grateful to you, Mr. Mayor, and certainly to you guys at the council. So thank you very much. Happy to answer any questions you have.
Counsel? Thank you.
Thank you.
Adnan Al Jamar Jalal regarding the liquor license, Brother Smart, Reggie Hill regarding ordinance 22021, resolutions 09546, 6D, 561, and 562.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Citizens, stakeholders of Mobile, greetings. Reggie Hill, 1007 Center Street. I rise today to address those matters, 09546, 22021, 60561, and 562. I want to start with 09546. It seems that we're going to be transferring 40-something million dollars from the surplus spending towards capital projects. That is something that I think is imperative, that we get to work on with the infrastructure within the city. So that's a bold move that I am quite appreciative of. But I would like to know some details in which could explain where these resources are actually going. So is there anything that is on the agenda right now that specifies where these resources are allocated towards?
Go ahead and finish your comments. We'll answer once you finish your comments.
Okay. I would like to answer on that. Thank you for saying that you were providing. Let's go to this, this next piece, 60-561 and 562, towards Calaway Smith Middle School. Now, certain organizations, the leaders of those groups are able to sustain themselves amidst discriminatory actions that are done by these government agencies that are here assembled for us today. So would there be any reason, however, to prevent an entity such as a school that is in dire need of support from its governing officials from receiving these resources? Is there a timeline that has been placed on how long it will take for them to receive these resources? And what would classify them not being allowed to receive them, seeing that this would be something that is approved by this sitting body? And I hope that you will give the same regards to answering those questions about the transfer of funds that you will to these matters dealing with Calaway Smith Middle School. All right. And lastly, today, I want to look at the 22-021. That's very interesting to me, because I haven't seen you all have an extensive dialogue like this in a long time. The matter of the thing to me, though, is like, why can't we do the same thing with firearms? I would like to see us put this same attention to the idea of firearms. I feel like we are much safer dealing with this idea of fireworks, and we don't have to copy everybody else in the state. In case we kind of forgot this, we are the first city in the state, so everybody else really is supposed to be following us. So we don't have to do all these unnecessary things that really don't have anything to do with really the public safety concerns here in the city of Mobile. Now, we've seen a lot of times where this body will send up letters to our delegation or to the state legislature, all these types of things. I would like to see something like that in regards to how we just loosely carry firearms right here. And we have a crisis dealing with public safety. So if we're gonna put attention like this onto these matters, some of our fireworks, let's please do the same for firearms, because we saw some heat examples yesterday, but it's not even Mobile hot yet. And we know how things turn out in this city when the heat starts increasing. So I'm begging you all, send something like this back as well to public safety, and then let's look at how we can address the public safety issues that are going on within the city. The budget is coming- The budget is coming up. We're going to have different discussions about that in the very near future. Thank you for yielding the floor.
To answer one question, which is a great thing that the city is looking to do today is transfer the funds. Chief Barbara, do you have that list in front of you exactly what's all going to be on that transfer?
Yes, sir. Do you want me to read them out?
Yeah.
US 45 median improvements, 2.7 million. Parking lot resurfacing for city facilities throughout the city of Mobile for $950,000. Boys and Girls Club, Community Center, and Pantry to go to design for $500,000. That'll be in District 3. Civic Center Site Design and Utility Relocation, $1 million. Civic Center Project Management, $1 million. Civic Center Arena and Theater Design, $3 million for 25% to 30% design completion. Equipment for Police Security Shields, $150,000. Brookley by the Bay to complete the design, $1.6 million. Civic Center Parking Facility, $29 million. Marketing Contract, $150,000. Small Asphalt Repairs, $500,000.
Thank you. Again, this is, to me, some great news, especially in District 3, for the design of a community center. That's something they've been asking for for many, many, many years. And even for Highway 45 between Districts 2 and District 1, you know, citizens have been hollering about getting that upgraded for many, many years. Even the former council member was hollering about that. So I do applaud this administration for putting this in front of us today, plus with the other good stuff that's on there. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Chairman, before, yeah, before we move on, just to go back to the list that Chief Barbara just read, where it says the small asphalt repairs, for council members here, that's really not small. This is something that we've been talking about for well over a year. And what it is, is instead of constantly going out and filling potholes where you have many potholes in one area that have been repaired over and over again, what we are going to do with this is like what we do with our utilities, when they come out and they cut a street or cut a patch in a street, we require them to come back and not just fill a pothole or make a small repair. They have to come back and actually mill the area and then put asphalt down in a larger swath, not fully resurfacing the street necessarily, but a much larger area so that the street is smooth. So that's what we are going to start doing with these areas that have so many potholes that, again, our public works crews have to continually go out and refill and refilm. So this will enable us to keep the streets smoother, certainly looking better, and also provide a little bit longer life for some of these streets that before we would have to get out there and resurface the entire thing because of the issue with so many potholes. So, again, this is something, the whole list is needed, obviously, it's a priority for all of us, but the small asphalt repairs is just one item in there that this council and the administration have been working on for some time, and I'm really glad to see that.
Again, thank you. Madam Clerk.
Ordnance is held over 22021. Ordnance to amend Chapter 39, Article 10, Division 1, and Chapter 22 fireworks Mobile City Code.
Motion to hold over one week.
Second.
And properly moving second in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't lay over one week.
Resolutions held over 01532. Authorized Agreement between the City of Mobile, ALDOT, and the Mobile County Commission for Regional Transportation Operations Program and Management, 01533. Authorized Agreement with Peyton Hickman to provide tennis lessons and clinics, 08534. Approved purchase order to Capital Tractor for two utility carts, 08535. Approved purchase order to Global Industries for office furniture, 08536. Approved purchase order to North American Fire Equipment Company, Inc. for hydro fusion rescue trucks and accessories, 08537. Approved purchase order to Coast to Coast Custom Mobile Fending LLC for enclosed trailer, 08538. Approved purchase order to Sand scene Lincoln for replacement engine for Ford ambulance, 08539. Approved purchase order to Sun South LLC for John Deere Moore for Parks Department, 08540. Approved purchase order to TSA Inc. for notebook computers, 08541. Approved purchase order to CDW Government for surveillance cameras and accessories, 08542 and 543. Approved purchase order to Sun South for two John Deere Zero Turn Moors and for John Deere grooming more. 909546. Transfer funds from Unassigned General Fund to various capital projects in the Capital Improvements Fund, 09547. Transfer funds from Public Facility Improvement Fund to Miscellaneous Grant Fund as a match for the Alabama Department of Economic and Community Affairs State-funded Electric Vehicle Charging Infrastructure Grant Program, 21548. Authorized contract with Bill Smith Electric for installation of emergency generator at Mobile Police Department First Precinct, 21549. Authorized contract with McLean Construction Company for Phase 2 construction for the Three Mile Creek Watershed Restoration Project, 31550. Authorized grant application to the Alabama Department of Economic and Community Affairs for the state-funded Electric Vehicle Charging Infrastructure Grant Program, 37551. Consider approval of a certificate of public convenience and necessity to Far West Side Limo and Shuttle to operate a shuttle service.
So move.
Second.
And properly moving second in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass.
Consent Resolutions being introduced, 37552 through 01585.
Move to waive the rules for immediate consideration of these resolutions as read.
Second.
And properly moving second in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Rules waived.
37552, 553, 554, and 555 are recommending approval to the ABC Board for issuance of a lounge retail liquor Class 1 license to the Gentlemen's Corner Nail and Spa Salon on Airport Boulevard for issuance of a lounge retail liquor Class 2 license to Fairground Liquor on Ziegler Boulevard for issuance of a retail beer table wine off-premises only license to Fairground Chevron on Ziegler Boulevard for issuance of a retail beer table wine off-premises only license to Brothers Market on North Cody Road. 40556, 557, 558, and 559 are recommending approval, declaring destructures at 2102 Gate Avenue, 556 Oak Drive Court, 2763 Gonzalez Road, and 5800 Helen Street. Public nuisances in order and them demolished. 6560, 561, 562, 563, 564, and 565 are determining appropriations to the Mobile Law Enforcement Foundation, Callaway Smith Middle School, Bishop State Community College Foundation, Memson Park Athletics, American Society of Botanical Artists. Serve a public purpose and approving payment, 01585. Authorized agreement to facilitate landscape and irrigation in public right-of-way.
So move.
Second.
And properly moving second in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass.
Mr. President. Quick question. There's an item, the last item on the agenda today is 21584. It's an emergency repair on Daughtry Street for a drainage issue. Would ask that the council consider moving that up for unanimous consent today as it's an emergency repair. I apologize for not letting you know sooner.
Mr. President.
Mr. Dave.
I'm familiar with this issue, and this is a sinkhole on the Daughtry Street median, and it has the potential, if it's not corrected quickly, to impact the road itself. And I'd like to move for unanimous consent to take this one up today.
All right. Madam Clerk.
We have to make a motion. I move to waive the rules on 21584.
Haven't gotten there yet.
She hasn't gotten there yet.
So we got to vote on the consent resolutions. Do we vote on those?
In other discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Rules waived.
Resolutions being introduced, 01566 through 21584.
Move to lay over for council rules these resolutions as read, with the exception of 21584 to move forward today.
Second.
And properly moving second in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Madam Clerk.
21584. Authorized contract with Chris Brewer Contracting for Daughtry Street Emergency Drainage Repair Project.
So move.
Second.
And properly move it second in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass.
Announcements.
District 1, Councilman Penn.
Thank you, Mr. President. On this past week, again, I had an opportunity to attend multiple events. We had the grand opening at LaFlore High School Stadium, and it's a great opportunity for what's taking place. Well, we passed the day with $2.7 million going to the Highway 45 medium to start revolting the Tomaville community and with the new stadium. I believe this is just going to be a great opportunity to just move forward in the Tomaville community. So thank you to the administration, thank you to the council today. I'm excited what's taking place in the Tomaville community. Also, I had the opportunity to participate with straight talk ministries. Myself and Ms. Keisha Brown both received the Community Outreach Award, but they are doing great things in the Kryon community. It was our feeding the community week, and Ms. Brown had the opportunity to participate in that event that was held in the Kryon community in District 1. And then I also had the opportunity to participate in an event at Phillips Temple in the Tomaville community. So there's a lot of great things taking place, and I want to thank everyone in all our churches and all our community organizations for serving our community. And so today, a lot of great things taking place in District 1. Thank you again. I mean, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Penn. District 2, Councilman Carroll.
No announcements.
District 4, Councilman Reynolds.
No announcements.
District 5, Councilman Dave. District 7, Councilwoman Gregory.
No announcements.
Anything from the administration? Mr. Leonard.
Mr. President, at this time, we're going to take the council into executive session pursuant to Alabama Code Section 3625A subsection 3 to discuss pending or potentially imminent litigation matters. I am, my name is Michael M. Linder Jr. I am an attorney licensed to practice law in the state of Alabama, and I certify that that is an appropriate reason for taking us into executive session at this time. I believe we are going to reconvene on the 9th floor.
Second.
And properly moving second in discussion. Clerk.
President Small.
Yes.
Vice President Gregory.
Yes.
Councilmember Penn.
Yes.
Councilmember Carroll.
Yes.
Councilmember Reynolds.
Yes.
Councilmember Dave.